...part of our meeting. To begin with, we do need to excuse a couple of our council members and our mayor. Councilmember Ford, councilmember Clough, and Mayor Nelson are all out of town this evening, so they won't be joining us, so we need to excuse them. We'll move forward by asking Councilwoman Granger to give us an invocation, after which, Councilman Belliston will be sent over to the podium.
Our beloved Father in heaven, we want you to know of our gratitude for the opportunity that we have to participate in the work of this city, to live in this beautiful country, and to be in this nation. We ask, Father, blessing us all as we deliberate and try to be careful and understanding in our decisions, as for that influence in doing that. Please, again, accept our gratitude for those who work so hard to make things happen in this community that will be positive for those who live here, like you say, the same in Jesus Christ.
Amen. Please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Granger, Councilman Belliston. We'll move to item number one on our agenda, and that is the approval of our agenda from the councils.
I move approval with the deletion of, possible deletion of G and H under number eight.
Yeah, that's probably what, let's not, let's leave those on the agenda, and then we'll make a decision.
You say, when we get there?
There's lots left on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll get that that's ready.
Second. Thank you, move before approval by Councilwoman Granger, second by Councilman Belliston.
Granger, aye.
Belliston. Aye. Item number two, announcements. We have a couple of great men from our Washington City Lions Club here this evening to make an announcement concerning our Lions Club 50th Anniversary Celebration Breakfast for the citizens of Washington City. Just sort of carry.
Well, I'm pleased to be here, and I've got just a short presentation for you, reference our celebration, and we're offering a free breakfast to the community of September, and we'd like the city to help support it, so that's why we're here.
Thank you. My name is Max Turf. Our Lions Club began in 1969, and through the years, the Lions Club has helped build the city of Washington City. In fact, they helped to get the very first fire truck, if you can believe that, many years ago. So, and several have been on the city council, but we express our appreciation to the city for helping us in years past, but what we're asking is that, on this free breakfast that we're doing on September 28th, it's a Saturday, September 28th, that you would again help us with a small, small amount of money to buy food, because it's going to be free to the public, and we're hoping that the entire city comes out and enjoy this. We've got a great heritage, as the city does. We've done a lot of things to help build Washington City, and will continue to do so. If you have any questions, I'll attend those questions.
So that's 50 years of the Washington City.
Washington City, yeah. It is, it really is.
Any other questions?
How do we go about approving some support for this event?
The amount of mine, you may talk to the city, and I call down when you have to.
I think that a five hundred dollars.
Exactly.
And then request an invoice for five hundred dollars. We've got that. So I think we've covered the paper or something.
Okay.
I was most surprised it was announced on the agenda, but the Lions Club were excited about some of this, wanting to do, so it can be an evaluation.
Well, and you're doing what you do so often for all of us, so.
And what we're, what we're doing is also reaching out to the community this time and in the future. We need young blood in the Lions Club. As you can realize, the Lions Club members are getting older, and some of them are, some of us are pretty decrepit. And so, we're, we're going to push for able-bodied men and women to join the Lions Club. Some feel guilty if they can't be there every meeting, but I say, you know, join and be there and help when you can, and don't worry about the nights or the project that you can't be. So, it's, it's going to be a great September 28th, and we hope to make our city better here.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that, and I think that's our new motion. You just want to make a motion for that amount.
Do we know where the news could be?
It's going to be out of the mayor's special.
Okay. I move, I move approval of, our approval of that invoice, the amount of five hundred dollars to support the Lions Club, who have done such a superb job of supporting the city.
I'll second that, and I think the term is season. Season. There you go. Well, I, I think by what you're doing, it's a great thing, because we'll allow the people to get more exposed to it, and by that, we'll have to make sure that as a city, we support probably getting that on our website and announce as to what really that entails, is breakfasts, as well as come find out how to become part of the Lions Club, and what they do, and the service we give to the community doing that, so, so I appreciate it. We have a motion and a second for approval of funding that breakfast.
Granger, aye.
Belliston. Turick, aye. So we look forward to that great event, and thank you so much for all you do in our community. I see you survived the Fourth, and you're still doing well, so. Our, our Lions do do a lot in our community, from Easter egg hunts to breakfast, almost every event, and running the whole Fourth of July in our community, so thank you, Lions Club. I'd like to step up here so we can get it out, we have to record all these, so you know how that goes.
One of the neat things that we do every fall is we go to about nine or 10 grade schools, and we do eye tests for K through five or six, whatever is there, and it is such a neat, neat opportunity to go and help these children have their eye test, and if a family does not have sufficient money to buy glasses and the kid needs it, our Lions Club does it. And, and we've also, this year, gave two $1,000 scholarships to citizens of Washington City for one month college.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate all you guys doing that. Item number three, Declaration of Extentions of Conflicts for me this evening at Airport Tammy. I'm involved in applications of G and H. That application, and we'll be stepping back, stepping towards this. Any other declarations to declare? Now, we'll move to item four, Consent Agenda, which consists of a board auto report for June of 2019, and also a special event consideration to approve the closure of the parade route, and also a small portion of 100 East between Main Street and 100 North for our Washington City Pioneer Day Celebration. They just need to comb a little section out of the food system, so it's not a total closure of that, well, just a portion. Airport Tammy will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
I'll second that with the addition of that small portion on 100 East.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval by Councilman Belliston, second by Councilwoman Granger.
Granger, aye.
Belliston. Turick, aye. Item five, Plat Revision. Consideration to approve a revision to the final plaque for the fifth amended OK Corrals, Phase 1A, applicant Parker Button.
The applicant has requested approval of a revision of the final plaque for the fifth amended OK Corrals, Phase 1A. What happened here, and I'll just zoom in on the area in question. Back in February, the 27th, your meeting, you approved this final plaque. At the time, if you take note of Lot 33, just in that little area up there above, it was Lot 34. The Buttons have had an opportunity to purchase that lot, want to incorporate it into their, the lot they already own, which is Lot E, and that's what one of the revisions of this plaque is, was making that a combination of lots. And so, this never did get recorded, we have, that's why we have this little opportunity of a revision, so that in between, you approve it, and if there's a minor thing they need to do to it, we just bring it back as a revision to the council, make sure you're okay with this, this little change of just incorporating Lot 34, which is in between that 115.13 and that C24 on the plaque there. That's where it kind of was, and they're just want to bring that in to the piece that they own, which is going to be the new Lot E as part of this plaque. Everything else stayed the same, we just wanted, you know, luckily, they did it before it went and got recorded, or else we would have been back with the sixth amended plaque of OK Corrals, 1A. So does that help make sense for you, or?
Makes sense when we do these, when we talk around that, the neighbors, public hearings, and things like that.
We, we went through all those, you know, and so...
Yeah, but that was for, for lots not required.
Yeah, the ones, the ones that have a say are the lots that are being affected, is how that goes on a plaque amendment. Well, it's, the lot that would be affected is Lot 34, they own it, they're the ones who, does that make sense? I mean, when you do a plaque amendment, it's only the ones, it's the lots that are being affected that are the signers of the plaque, et cetera. I mean, if you feel you want to push it back and go all the way through, that's your prerogative as a council to do.
No, I don't, I don't necessarily want to go all the way back through, like, I just think, as some of these get consolidated into some of these big lots, and it's, as I recall, it's industrial.
It is, it's light industrial.
So, now you have the opportunity to drastically change what's, what's out there. I just want to know what the process is, and how that's going to be. Any other questions or comments? Now I'll look for motion.
I move approval of the revision to the final plaque for the fifth amended OK Corrals, Number 1A, applicant Parker Button.
Motion for approval, Councilwoman Granger, second by Councilman Belliston.
Granger, aye.
Belliston. Turick, aye. Item six is our, we're opening our public hearings. Public hearing for consideration to approve a zone change request, Z-19-07, a request from an A20 agricultural 20-acre lots to PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, located at approximately 600 East and Treasure Valley Road, applicant Development Solutions.
Thank you. As stated, the request is to approve a zone change of approximately 13.57 acres. The request to change is from, again, the current zoning of agricultural 20-acre minimum or the A2 designation to a proposed PUD residential, which is a planned unit development. This will be the, under the multifamily, again, we have three different options in the PUD residential, and this one will be falling under that multifamily development standards. The PUDR request is for the purpose of developing the 13.57 acres into a residential project consisting of twoplexes, threeplexes, and fourplex townhomes, with a total unit count of 111 units. Each dwelling unit will have three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a two-car garage, with the two-car driveway in front of that, is also. Now, this particular location just went through the general plan amendment approval process, the, this particular proposed 13.57 acre area was given to the medium-high-density designation as part of the general plan. Within that designation, it carries a 7 to 12 dwelling unit per acre density ratio. This proposed project will have an 8.2 dwelling unit per acre ratio, again, well within that 7 to 12, and on the, actually, the lower end of that. The surrounding zoning to this particular project in parcel is R3 and C1 to the north, R18 to the west, and, again, the Ag20, which will be left on the south and east side of the project. Staff has reviewed the request, the zone change, wishes to point out just a few items of concern, and I'll be able to address those as it relates to this project. Of course, we're worried about the congestion of traffic on the Treasure Valley Road and 4200 South, and also 20 East. About a roadway punching through to the Washington Fields Road to the east with the addition of residences that have recently been approved by the city, along with the existing middle school, which is open and running, which is open and running, and then the addition of the new high school that is set to open this fall, in August. This particular area has big circulation problems. That's staff's kind of, one of my concerns, the other was, there needs to be solutions to push that traffic away from the two schools, not run it through those main entrances. Staff's already somewhat secured the access through the property, which is Zone C1, that's owned by the Hoops, Leanne and Dan, it's that pink kind of color, you see it in the right hand corner. In one of their approvals, they agreed to give the right-of-way, which is that line of that main road, it's a 66-foot planned, master-planned road, left foot there, so the only other portion was, I'll zoom in on it, is this particular area here. Wasn't able to get in your report, but I am pleased to tell you that I met with, was able to finally get through a two-week process between Larry Hancock, Bryce Gibby, and then Rulon Gardner, who they've turned the property over to help develop it, was in my office yesterday, told me verbally that he's more than glad, as the Hancock's and Gibby's are, to give up that area in a road dedication to the city right now. He's going to get with their surveyor, get that written up, and get it to the city with all the signatures, and then we'll quitclaim that over to the city. So, and then we'll just get the other piece from, again, the Hoops in that pink area, and then we will have dedicated, at least a dedicated portion of that road in the city's possession. Now, just to also extend on that, to let you know, there's a major water line that's waiting to come through that area as well that we need, and so with all this happening, it's, it's good news to pass on, so it kind of takes care of, you know, some of the concerns in mind that we will have that, that area now. Actually, how it gets built and by whom is the, the story.
Because typically, the developer builds it and then gives it to the city, in this case.
But it's not on their property.
Right away, so.
Yeah.
We may get, we'll probably end up having to.
And, and luckily, it's not a great deal of distance, but at least we will, at least get a lane of traffic, and that's what I explained to both property owners, is that we just need this to at least get one lane going one way and the other coming, so it'll probably just be a 27-foot patch of asphalt, but we also are able to get utilities through there at this time, too. I know there's a major water line, am I right, Mike, that needs to come through there, and they've been waiting on that as well, so this will help in a lot of areas, so. I just wanted to update that with you, again, I just met with Mr. Gardner yesterday after meeting with Mr. Hancock, and then Mr. Gibby wrote me an email saying that he had met with Larry Hancock as well, and they were all in agreeance that this, this is a good thing for them, for the city, for the area, so they were more than willing to jump on board with that, so. So with that said, go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. Elevations in the buildings shall be portrayed in December, not have elevations.
You should have elevations.
There is any, and I only bring this up because we've done zoning and then done the application process separately at times. I understand it's still in the process, and we'll make sure that, you know, if we're called out, that means, are supposed to be part of this mill, and they're not there.
Happy, more than glad to find them there. Oh, you're fine. I thought they were tagged on the bottom of that one, because they, they were originally, so I don't know why it doesn't.
I looked for them, I just don't want to call them out in a condition of approval that we have to have them up there, so.
It's a two-week hold, so if you want to alter.
Council with understanding that any questions regarding?
Yeah, we can have those, they're, they're kind of a craftsman style, is what it is, a mix of a modern craft. We'll make sure you have those when you have your, for your decision, and you can get those, and I apologize that they were tagged along the bottom. Let me finish the report so I can tell you what the planning commission thought, as I'm trying to get through this, but we'll, but the planning commission held their public hearing on the 19th of June, and they, the planning commission recommends approval of Z19-07 with the zone change request from Ag20 to the proposed PUD residential, with the request for the multifamily residential development standards onto you, the city And that's associated, again, with the findings and the conditions that you see in your report, so I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions for council? If you would mind, Drew, it probably would be a good idea if we could get that back up for any public to speak, at least they, they can reference that in the council as well.
Yeah, it should. Yeah, just, like I said, the condition, just so council knows, on this west boundary, between that green and that yellowish color, there will be a block wall that'll be associated with that, and also, just to let you know, the planning commission asked for this to be changed out here on Treasure Valley Road, they used to, the first proposal had all driveways on Treasure Valley, they were kind of uncomfortable with that, so they had the developer go back and, and look at, and they were able to put this alleyway in, and so they'll be adding a block wall along the Treasure Valley border as well of this project, so.
And how wide are that, those are public roads?
They're all public roads, except for the alleyway. The alleyway is going to be, like, all of our alleys are, I think they labeled this one, it's a 15-foot access through there for the people to drive in, to those, just those particular homes right there. But the rest of them are all public streets.
Is that something that's approved by our fire people, or is it just asked for by our planning commission, and so it shows on the plan?
Well, the fire, they get, they get to review this, and so, I think I saw Matt hanging around here earlier, unless he doesn't, but we do.
Sometimes we start asking for things, and they get drawn on a plan, and they never get through the proper review process to say, that really doesn't work for us. It looks like there's probably enough room there that we could, obviously, there's open space and stuff, it looks like they need a little more, because it's tight, and it could be accommodated, I think.
And, and if they, if it was so needed, we might be able to put in some kind of locked gates along the back, if they needed to come in from the back, you know, maybe add a couple of those in places that they'd like to have them, maybe, where they could come in under emergency circumstances off of Treasure Valley.
And they may fight everything from all the reason, they not be additional, meaning get into those alleyways anyway, so. Any other questions or discussion for Drew?
Well, do you want to say, have you, break down children in that kind of situation?
Yes.
Um, common space, it's like you have to maybe come over, I'm not sure what the regular...
We can have the, the developer can come up and explain what they're going to put in there. And, and we are also in the planning commission in that detention basin number three, which you'll be happy to hear, Councilwoman Granger, as they are going to line that with grass, so it can be used multi as a detention and extra play here. Yeah. We, we did that with you in mind during the planning commission meetings, so.
Other questions for Drew?
That was an expansion area I thought I saw.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, and they're, they're going to kind of wait here until the roadways get completed of what, you know, this either is it going to end up being just a landscaped open area, or, again, we'll have the developer kind of explain what they might want in there, but again, it was just, they wanted to leave that particular area, just, I had them added in, too, they, they actually left it out, I wanted it as part of this, because then it's a zone, because if they don't, it's left Ag20, and it's this little piece, and I didn't want to have to deal with some leftover remnant thing that had an A20 on it, and it's only, you know, a couple of thousand square feet, so I just had them throw it into the PUD, but, again, they're going to wait to see exactly how the roads finish out.
We're not really intending to add anything for you to see that area.
Well, we'll let him address that, I'm, I don't want to misspeak or misrepresent that.
Any other questions? I think I'll let the developer come last. I'll open the public hearing for this zone change request, Z-1907, to the public, to bring any fourth, or any comments or questions, and then we'll have the developer come at the end and answer those questions, seems to probably work the best, rather than back and forth, back and forth, so, we're going to try it that way. So go ahead and open our public hearing for this proposed zone change. Anyone that's here that would like to speak to this is welcome to come forward, just remind you to give us your name, and for the record, you should come forward. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing none, council, I'll bring it back to you for closure of our public hearing.
Move closure of this public hearing.
Motion for closure by Councilwoman Granger, second by Councilman Belliston.
Granger, aye.
Belliston. Turick, aye. Decision on this will be made in two weeks, we hold this over for two weeks to take further comment or discussions from those. Oh, we're going to have a little longer. I guess we should have let the developer, huh? When nobody else talked, it's like, oh.
You want me to sit back down?
No, no, because there was a couple of questions that were asked, so we'll put it on the record, even though it's after we've closed our public hearing.
I didn't know if you wanted me to come up after.
I apologize, I was just, I'm surprised that this may be, we didn't have anybody to speak, it's like, ah, it's kind of shocking, ah.
Councilmember Granger, you had a question about the expansion area? Oh, sorry, Ryan Thomas, Development Solutions Group.
So, because the Hancock group, that Wells Cardiff owns that little high-shake area, we decided to hold that area out, because when we, when we go to do the improvements for the subdivision and put a lot there, we have to build a curb all the way around. when we, when we go to do the improvements for the subdivision and put lot there, we have to build a curb all the way around for the subdivision. And because he owns the roadway portion, we can have built the roadway because he owns it. Um, but it kind of sounds like that's beginning to get, uh, cleared up. So we could be coming in the future with a, with a couple of units right there. Um, so we just held it out just so it wouldn't be encumbered by, by their property. We don't want to get on their property. Yeah, it'd be amended, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So we, yeah, we, yeah, we would go through, uh, planning commission staff.
But we wouldn't like to put a park area in there for somebody younger kids.
Um, so, uh, the area, you had a questions about the rec area also. Right there. Um, that is, that's not a pickleball court. That's a, we, we decided not, we were going to do a pickleball court at first, but because it gets a little noisy with the pickleball, we decided to do some a little softer volleyball court, sand volleyball. And, uh, and then all the area, that, uh, it's going to be a tot lot above it. And then also the detention base number three is going to be grassed and we're going to have, uh, walking paths throughout the, uh, the rec area.
So what is it above it for?
Oh, just a tot lot, um, for swing set, uh, slide areas, um, and the sandbox.
Yeah, just, just as a suggestion, you know, what we're noticing with some of these multi dwellings, they are short of storage space.
Are, excuse me, what?
They're short of storage space. When you have two and three bedrooms, they've got tots and they've got heights and they've.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and, uh, to address that also, um, so there can be driveways and garages in these units. And so they'll have a little, some storage in the, in the garage along with the.
Some developers starting to develop some storage units.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I noticed that, uh, on the, on Troy's actually. Oh.
Well, we want these places, even though they're starter homes for a lot of people, to be very livable.
Yeah.
Sometimes they're not. And that isn't what we want in our city. So the more you do to make them livable, the happier they get.
Yeah. Yeah. Drew, Drew, can you access the planning commission report? Um, I think I know what, uh, council member Bellyston's getting at too, is he wants the rear to have some architectural element.
I wasn't going to go there. I said you did go there.
So we, we are, we're not going to build a flat wall on the back of the, uh, of, of the units. We'll have a, uh, also be some, uh, relief.
So that's.
Yeah.
So we have high enough standards for multiplexes so that the neighbors are not hearing the neighbors on those common walls?
Yeah, um, I think, uh, just the sound that, in the firewall.
Yeah.
The pits on the neighbor, huh?
Yeah.
A normal neighbor, yes.
Somebody opens up a garage, man.
Any other questions I could answer or try to? Thank you.
For, uh, seeing you in a couple more weeks. Well, actually, a month.
Okay. That's right.
Yeah, the twenty-fourth falls on, on our next meeting, so that we are holding the meeting until the second week in August.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We did, and I don't, he can just email to us or talk to you. All right, move to item number seven, another public hearing for a height waiver. Uh, preparing to consider height waiver, H W dash nineteen dash oh three. Request, uh, for a garage to go from twenty feet for the city code to twenty-three and a half feet located at eighty-seven East, thirty-nine thirty South, applicant Lee and Perry.
Make sure I grabbed the right one. This is a loaded night with height, height waivers, so. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the maximum height of buildings allowed for accessory structures in the zoning of his property. The maximum allowable height posted in our, um, modifying regulations is twenty feet. You have to be ten feet away from the primary structure. You can go up to twenty feet at the highest point and stay three feet off of the side of the rear property. Um, the applicant is requesting to go to twenty-three and a half feet. I threw a few inches in. He has twenty-three one, but, um, I like to not have to, you know, get out there. So I added a few inches to make it, you know, five inches to spare in case his tile is bigger than, than it should be or whatever that ends up being, so. Um, but that's what the request is tonight. You can kind of see the plans. Now, the only thing I, I, I would ask planning wise, because I've talked to the council and the planning commission about this maybe in a, a work session recently, and if it's possible, and, and if he has, if we could move the, the building maybe a little bit more into the property, I, I have no problem going with a few feet up if he has room to push it more than, you know, get away from three feet minimum, maybe to five feet or something. You know, five or six feet away from the property lines, then staff would be all in favor of that. So we'll let, I don't know if he does, we'll invite him up. So it's, it's his request for this height waiver.
So would your concern be if that is not the case, just the fact that it is a little closer to the neighbors approaching, won't the neighbors possibly?
Yeah, and that, that's always the biggest reason. When you're at, you know, three feet, sounds like, I mean, it's, but when you're standing there, you, you always question, is that three feet? It feels like it's not. And then when you add an overhang on top of that, which we allow for overhangs to come and they're not calculated, then it even feels more so. And, uh, so that's just the basic reason.
Thanks for your question. All right, we will open this up. This is also a public hearing, so if there's anyone here that is to speak to this height waiver request in H W dash nineteen oh three. We invite you to come forward and state your name. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll go back to council for closure of our public hearing.
Closure.
We have a motion for closure of our public hearing by Councilman Granger, second by Councilman Bellyston.
Granger, aye.
Bellyston, Turek, aye. Seventeen B, consideration to approve the height waiver. H W nineteen oh three requests for a garage to go from twenty feet for the city code to twenty-three and a half feet located at eighty-seven East to eighty-nine thirty South. Was there any discussion or desire to speak with the applicant concerning any movement there? Public hearing's been closed. Now we're making, now we're making.
What, what was the setbacks?
And I don't have a particular site plan, but I would imagine that's what they would, I mean, if it's me at my home, that's exactly what I'm going to.
Yeah, so what were you asking on?
Well, staff, staff had stated that they were a little more comfortable if the applicant was willing to have whatever they were pulling off in this property. Or lock, just for the neighbors. I didn't want that to set the council up or I'm resiring this question.
But the applicant's got windows on both sides. I would suggest that he, he should because otherwise you gotta use fire rate glass. So it's about being a little bit more compliant.
Yeah, that's true.
At least that.
Yeah. Or eliminate your windows on the side.
So you think the code will take care of itself?
Well, if he leaves the windows, it probably will because he won't want to pay for that, that glass.
I might just pull it up more. I'm kind of looking a little different. We have, um, we've got a number of these, it's two times, about twenty to twenty-three.
Yeah, thirty-five to fifty-four.
You know, like are there conditions that we can create in our ordinance structure that will deal with that, for example? If it's a ski slope, if it's further away from the back fence, also they can go higher on it, so we can enact as a council. So that there's a reasonable one scene, height waivers come down. But, but when you see that maybe of the same kind of thing, are there some rules where you can have something else? Different ability, at least in this place. We had a, it's a two car garage and our ordinance needs more.
Well, and this, yeah, and unfortunately this particular one, the reason he is is because his C C N R state that he's got to maintain somewhat the same pitch from the house, which some of the C C N Rs then push people into this, because I said, hey, what, just put a flat roof on it. And he said, I'd love to, but the C C N Rs tell me I have to have the pitch and, and the finish, you know, the tile on it. So.
I would suggest.
Yes, it is some of that, so it doesn't. These smaller, that's what look at accessory plans for garages. That is part of the discussion.
Yeah, I think they, they'll come back with some ones that we can cover, so perhaps they can use initially, but they can take it from there.
All right, council, I will look for a motion, uh, to consider a, consideration of the height waiver. Uh, Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the height waiver, H W dash nineteen dash oh three, request for a garage to go from twenty feet for the city code to twenty-three and a half feet located at eighty-seven East to eighty-nine thirty South. And motion is for approval by Councilman Bellyston.
I'll second that again with the condition maybe that we can look at ordinance and cover some of this and protect the neighbors.
Second by Councilman Granger.
Granger, aye.
Bellyston, Turek, aye. Uh, item C, a public hearing to consider the height waiver, H W dash nineteen dash oh four. A request for the Best Western Hotel Height from thirty-five feet to fifty-four feet located approximately Commerce Boulevard and Washington Park.
Think he has, has stated his request for the waiver of the height on a building allowed in a C two zone property. The maximum allowable height posted at pretty much all of our zones, unless you're in the P C D is thirty-five feet. The applicant is seeking approval to extend a height of the building on the property to fifty-five feet. That is to accommodate for the four stories of the hotel that they're, um, proposing to put in. And this is right next to the new Terrible's, um, gas station over there on, on exit thirteen. So, um, the applicant is proposing again to build this four story new hotel at that location. They need to get a waiver of height to be able to move forward with this project. And, um, I'm glad to answer any questions you might have on my part, but it's pretty straightforward. This one is, it's, um, sitting there in a commercial zone. And it is right next to Sitla that we've allowed, you know, they put into their P C D to plan for, for bigger building, the commercial buildings, so.
While we gotta look at the C two zone and our free zones as well as.
Yeah, the planning commission made their recommendation. I'm just trying to find some time where I can, you know, slip that one in with all the other good things that are happening, but it sounds like we'll, we'll make those more priorities now, you know? Again, all of a sudden, we didn't have many height requests and then we had four in one night. You know, they just all came within, it seemed like five days of each other.
It's probably good that they do because then we start looking after we have the right rules.
Right. And, and your planning commission totally agreed with that. I mean, I think it was almost unanimous and I have a couple up in here tonight. I think they shake their head yes that we've talked about, you know, raising that height and going up to, you know, into the forties in certain commercial zones and industrial zones and let those be a little bit more. And they probably should be and could be, so we'll, I'll, I'll start moving. That's right. Instead of having to come to this step as well, yeah, it's already, as long as they meet it, the planning commission feels, you know, it's okay, the staff, you know, the fire department and all the public works and everybody else is okay with it, then that's probably what we, we want to do. It's just, it's time.
So I think even this, first, the question's still there. It's what are we blocking with that extra nineteen feet or what?
In this case, you're not, because behind them on the backside of this is a drop of, it's, well, you've seen, they've landscaped that hole and it's a good thirty, forty, forty plus, maybe fifty, fifty drop on the backside. So it's really not blocking, you know, I don't think much of any direction for anybody, um, in this particular case. Yeah, and we could, and that, and then we would look at those, so.
Any other questions for her? No, we'll go ahead. This is also a public hearing, so we'll open it up for anyone that may have questions, comments, desire to share concerning the height waiver of H W dash nineteen oh four. A request for the Best Western Hotel Height from thirty-five feet to fifty-four feet. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to that, we'd invite you to come forward and state your name. Seeing none, council, I'll bring it back to you for closure of our public hearing.
Remove, uh, pleasure of the public hearing for the height waiver, waiver is up to the, dash oh four.
Motion for closure by Councilman Granger, second by Councilman Bellyston.
Granger, aye.
Bellyston, Turek, aye. Item E, a public hearing, uh, let's see, it's the consideration to approve the height waiver, H W nineteen dash oh four, request for Best Western Hotel Height thirty-five feet to fifty-four feet located approximately Commerce Boulevard and Washington Park.
Remove approval of that height waiver for H W nineteen oh four on item D.
Second, motion is for approval by Councilman Granger, second by Councilman Bellyston.
Granger, aye.
Turek, aye. You're doing great, kids. Keep hanging in there. Item E, a public hearing to consider a hate wa- height, a hate waiver, a height waiver, H W dash nineteen oh five. A request for an additional height to a garage from twenty feet to twenty-four feet located at seven 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 West Seminole Drive.
I thought you were going to start talking about the inland port thing with the hate thing going at, that you saw on the news, but that was pretty ugly up there the other day. Uh, another applicant requesting waiver of the height of the maximum for accessory building. Um, again, this is in a residential zone. It's twenty feet is the maximum. They're wishing to, uh, build this particular project you see before you. Um, with some bonus area on top of a garage that he likes to restore old cars in. He's got some neat old cars and, uh, he's wishing to have the maximum height on this building up to twenty-four feet. Again, I've thrown in that little buffer. Um, I think he's just under that on his design. Twenty-three and something, so I just wanted to round it up to twenty-four. And, um, again, this is somewhat like the one, the first one we looked at. It's an accessory structure in the backyard. Be glad to answer any questions the council had before you go into public hearing.
Can you show us what the neighborhood looks like around?
Yeah, luckily this particular individual's not too far from Council Turek's home, um, just down the street. We'll bring that up here. And, uh. Yeah, luckily, this particular individual's not too far from Council Terrick's home, um, just down the street, and we'll bring that up here, and, uh.
So I assume, I assume that this will be more in the south, plus the border, that part there.
Yeah, let me kind of zoom in here before, I can't chew gum walks, can I answer and scroll, I, I don't know what it is, my fingers don't, so give me just, just, just a second here, um.
Right there.
Right there. Yeah, it's seven 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 west is, is where this is, so he, you've got an LDS church behind him, you've got Sandia, which is a major collector on, on the one side, uh, one neighbor on the opposite side, and then, of course, the city street out in front.
Kind of stuck tonight, at twenty-three and a half feet. Let's not keep you tuned up, can we go back down to twenty-three and a half, before we can have an ordinance now?
I can't, I, I was trying to look and see, I can't remember, because mine, is yours a little bit easier to read, I don't know if it's my old eyes or, but when I scroll down on that, I, because of the grain. I know that's what I put on there, but I think his request is twenty-three and something, so.
I would say it's twenty-three and a half, I'd like us to settle on some number.
Well, we'll just let him know that's, if you want to do twenty-three and a half, then. I think he can take six inches out of the walls, you know, that are holding up that, the attic.
So he's already got one, one accessory structure for that.
Right.
This is the second.
Yes.
I'm curious, who does the other structure can be, because this looks like it's right next door.
Or is this a, it's like it's a, it's a.
I'm going to invite him, him up to answer those questions.
Any other questions for Drew?
Do we have rules about how close one accessory building can be to that?
Well, we kind of let the building code take that if they need to come into play on that, so.
The council has any questions for Drew?
It looks, it's like he's just expanding to the eight, so.
We'll, we'll invite the applicant up here. So if there's, if there's no other questions for Drew, we will go ahead and open our public hearing for height waiver, HW dash nineteen dash oh five, a request for additional height to the garage from twenty feet, uh, to twenty-four feet, located at seven 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 west Severon Drive. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to that, invite you to come forward, state your name. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and ask the applicant if he wouldn't mind coming forward to answer a couple of questions the council had, Mr. Sylvester here. No applicant here. Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to council.
Okay, this looks like an expansion of the structure. And if it's not, they're offering those together.
It looks, it looks to me based on the plan he's sharing, uh, I'm calling for him to make these tiny structures together.
Well, I s, I see, that's what you're saying, is he's jutting to the side, that's right, I get it. So it is going to be, he'll just continue it to the, I guess would be the south.
The south and the east.
Would it be the east, um?
Yeah, the south goes into the church.
Problem is, he's putting the garage door on that east side, so that means he has to go around, he has the garage door back, he doesn't have access on C-two. The exit is a B, back there, it's all, it's, 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 it's.
Well, it's, actually, almost looks like there might be a depression right there, doesn't it?
I don't think there's a, I don't think there's.
And probably wouldn't be.
There is a gate that's, that has been used in that backyard.
And what he's trying to do is put in the garage, that he can put in one of these lifts, you know, where you buy the four posts that you mount to the ground, and you come in, and it's on a pneumatic charge, and it just lifts so he can work under the cars, he restores old, old cars, is what he does, and just wants a nice shop area that he can work with, and so that's the basic reason why he's building the ex, extra there, so. But I'm surprised he's not here, he knew the meeting was here tonight, told me, should be here to answer any questions, so something must have happened, so.
We'll bring it back to council for closure of our public hearing, and we'll decide what they want to do from there. For closure by council, Councilman Bellister, second, and by Councilman Granger.
Granger, aye.
Bellister, aye.
Terrick, aye. So, then we'll make a consideration to approve the height waiver, HW dash nineteen dash oh five, request for additional height to a garage from twenty feet, for city code to twenty-four feet, located at seven 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 west Severon Drive.
All of us just made the motion to table this, until August. I suppose we'll drive and ask those questions in the afternoon.
Okay, we'll make a motion to that.
Yep, I'll make a motion on the table. Uh, height waiver, HW dash nineteen dash zero five, request for additional height to garage from twenty feet to twenty-four feet, located at seven 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 west Severon Drive.
Okay, motion is for a table on, uh, request HW dash nineteen oh five, and I'm second, second by Councilman Granger.
Granger, aye.
Bellister, aye.
Terrick, aye. Item has been tabled.
Did you put a date on that?
Yes, to our next meeting.
Okay. Okay, so August, yeah.
So I think the questions center around how he gets into it, and is it part of it, and is it separate?
Yeah, no, we'll just, I'm going to let him know, he needs to be here to explain everything to you guys, and maybe what I'll have him do is draw up a nice little site plan, too, that shows, you know, on what he's doing on paper.
All right, item G, uh, is there anyone here, just for council's, uh, knowledge, is there anyone here that is here to speak to public, uh, to item G, our public hearing, on the trail yet, department's night? If there's nobody here tonight, I think that the council has a desire to go ahead and table that one for our next, that item G and H, as we only have two council members to sit to vote, which is, we cannot do. So we, we thought that if there was anyone here to speak, we would let you speak, uh, not seeing anyone do that, I would look for a motion to table with items G and H.
Yeah, I move to table items G and H, number, number seven.
Okay, motion is for a table of items G and H, to our next meeting in August.
Tell our next meeting, God, next week.
Normally, I wouldn't vote on those stuff, but where it's a table, I'll, I'll second that.
Motion is for table and second.
Granger.
Bellister.
Terrick, aye, most of items are tabled. Item eight, rap tax distribution, a consideration to approve a request for a rap tax distribution to Brigg's Playhouse, applicant, uh, is it producer, Tim Young? We had a good visit with Mr. Young and a couple of the other applicants last night, it's part of our council meetings, so we appreciate them being here. Um, I'll look forward to any discussion the council would like to have concerning Brigg's Playhouse's distribution, if I remember right, that was fifty-four thousand. Fifty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight.
Um, my own part of our discussion included, if he's going to move with the money following, and yet, we've had, though, we did not fund it, opportunities to support, uh, to, because they affect the community. We received emails from Washington and San George residents, as well as Washington City, but very much like having the Washington City, wanted to stay. That having said, I don't think that it's really unusual that if they had to move, the money would help during this term, um, maybe, even though that would certainly not be our preference. My thinking is, I don't want to make that more complicated by holding some of the money out, waiting to see what happens, and, 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 if they were to close their doors, I think that that's another issue, um, um, and, you know, I think we need to consider that, and so we should have.
Yeah, that's, I've had the same concerns as, as we had that discussion last night, is for the public's, uh, aware, is, is part of the concern is, there's a possibility of Brigg's Playhouse would, uh, would not be here. Uh, we visited with him last night about giving us possibly a commitment to longer term, and longest term he could give us is through the end of the year. And so some of that discussion's been, you know, fifty-three thousand dollars, only lasted six months, it doesn't benefit our community, how do we, so, that's, that's kind of what Councilwoman Granger's alluding to, uh, some of those discussions and thoughts, I've had some of those thoughts myself, and one of the thoughts that I had is if we funded like twenty-five thousand dollars through, through January, and if they're able to come back and say, yep, we're going to be here another six months, then we'll fund the rest of it at that point.
Yeah, I think that, where I like to do is, we could do that, we could break it into six months, so that we're actually helping them for a year, but I would say we're helping them for a year, no matter where they are after six months.
My biggest concern is if they, if they don't survive.
If they close, then, then they don't get the other half, but if they are able to stay open, and certainly there seems to be enough liking of what they do to do that. Um, but I'm saying that let's not make the location, let's, the condition, let's not make whether they're still.
But I, I can appreciate that, I mean, obviously, Washington City, we, we, Washington City's benefit to that, we appreciate, like, the benefits to that.
I think the benefit would still be there for a lot of Washington City.
So, so your thinking is possibly allocating an amount up through, and, and probably allocating the whole amount at this point, but only distributing the agreement to distribute up through the end of January, something like that, and if they're, and still functioning, the rest will be allocated on that.
Oh, that's, allocate, I guess you can do a portion of the, allocate, distribution, et cetera, et cetera.
And that's what I would think that they would want to do.
We already have that in place, we're entering application, we can't, that's what we said, uh, we did prior years, we did multiple.
Correct, distributions.
Distributions by allocation.
And that certainly is a.
I'm not inclined to come back and, um, and re, why, we think we can roll it in our motion, so.
Yeah, we certainly could go either way, I can appreciate that.
Yeah.
You know, the other thought that I had, and, and, uh, uh, Mr. Young brought it up last night, which caused me lots of tossing and turning through the night, because he brought up a great idea, or a very thoughtful, key idea of that, is looking for the possibility of a community-built theater, that the city builds a theater, that we don't have to worry about the rents, and can, can they afford to stay, will they be here tomorrow, type things, that, that, there's a theater, we know the theater is always going to be here. And, uh, Mr. Young brought that kind of, that idea forward last night, and I tossed and turned all night, thinking, I love the idea. And, and, uh, obviously, the rap taxes is a funding source to help us to do that, if this council's so inclined to, to move that direction futuristically. And so, part of that thought process then goes to, you know, distributions of saying, can we create a fund that says this is going, the theater fund, that we fund that even though we're not building it, uh, today?
I guess, just, we take a certain portion of the, of the, of the.
That's, that's what's.
Thought I had. The city thing, was they, they create the project, and the bond, and build the project, you know, it's, it's almost something that size, and that. You know, you, you need a facility, probably allocate that, almost, better than, on, to.
Well, and that's, like I said, I guess there's a couple of different ways, and that's, one of them is a bond, where you speed the process up, you can plot the back.
I like, I like starting with double, we're at a, we're at a, that's what, also, I don't know, I can't get to allocating, I'm going to say thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars to a fund that will, will be for that purpose, and if we have to fund, we'll use that to, we'll not have to fund as much, and start to do, uh, something for the arts, which we do, arts, we do where creation, we do. We do some of the arts, we do the, the band and stuff, but I, I think, I think we, we're, 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 I don't know, we're, right now, but we show that in town.
But some money, or, 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 you know. I, I've had, had to do some, you know, bigger scale, or, and this goes to, our first market, to maybe be able to start, looking, okay, um, back to next year. We did bring up, and which was last night, about the five-one-C-three status, uh, the last distribution, to bring it on board again, because, like, the five-one-C-three status, um, it's, it's difficult, we don't have, council. But, my concern with the way that it's going from now, from outside, uh, five-one-C-three is, to me, feels like it's way to skirt, the way the law was made, we didn't write the law, we didn't put on, let it attach, that's the way the law, the law was made. Then it's supposed to be a five-one-C-three, not to, 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 to follow it through a five-one-C-three, to me, it just doesn't feel like, or, minds, or, or, sense. And I'm, 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 talking about, it's part of our challenge, that we said, we're going to keep on, keep changing, so, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's, the challenge is.
We can't, we can't.
Yeah, that's the problem.
I know, but I don't think this is here for us to, um, put that down, for, um, this is, um, um, they, their, their location establishes, they, 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 I, this is.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, uh, because I've got the same concerns, and in fact, last year, we were told, we're almost there, we're, we're, we're in the process, we're almost finished, and then we come back and say, well, we never really went anywhere with it, so I started saying, did we, you know, really what happened last year, I don't know.
Well, there, there were several messages into that, and this response last night was, well, you said if we got that cleared up, and they were.
Correct.
They were saying, we did say that.
Yeah.
We did say that, but we also said, okay, we said that, too.
And I, I understand the applicant's challenge, like, basically, I, I totally understand his position, I understand his desire to have it, to, you know, the arts, capital, they're a huge benefit to the community, um, a lot of people love the one that, they support our youth, totally support our, but pause, wait, it's like, my law was written, so.
So you're ready for motion?
I will look for a motion.
I move approval of the funding to the extent of the request, um, but that, and it'll only be distributed in six-month lots, um, in anticipation that they will continue to be doing what they're doing, and, you know, hopefully, in you, in Washington, we're not requiring that. Um, so, the first distribution would be half of that amount, the rest of the distribution would be based on their functioning, um, for the next six months, um. Also, make part of the motion, at least, this body's, um, nearly requirement, that that five-one-C-three be implemented, um, so that we feel comfortable that we're following the dictates of that law, rather than finding a workaround, which is a legal workaround, it's just not preferred by this council. I, yeah, we can't require it at this point, I can't require another council, and I won't be here, so I think we can only recommend. Well.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and second the motion, so we have some discussion.
So. Our precedent is going to be this January. Uh, I don't think we're outside of precedent, to say, yeah, we're just suggesting, we're, we're, we're. We have application, yeah, the applicant said, it is a six-month, remember, the, the, six months, and, and, well, it's, it's, to say, okay, we're back in six months, up in this, on, we're, uh, status is.
Okay, we have a motion to second for approval. No, we had, we had our discussion last night, so, I, uh, now this is, this is not a public hearing, so we appreciate that. Um, so the motion is for approval of the, the fifty-three thousand divided in half, so twenty-six thousand, five eighty-four, basically, this is, this is, period. Okay, so that's, that's the motion.
Ranger, I.
Correct. So let's look back for a second motion.
Okay, second motion is that we approve half of the amount, and then look at the situation to the charge of what the application for the other half, in six months.
So this motion will be for twenty-six thousand, I'm gonna round it, twenty-six thousand, six hundred. So the motion is for approval of twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Be correct, we have to come back in our January application. There's a motion I have to say, it's not a motion I have to say.
Ranger, I.
Bellis and I, but I will say that six months ago, I voted against because the five one C three wasn't needed in process. We're still at best safe point. I won't vote against it again.
And Terry, I. So we are approved for twenty-six thousand, six hundred. Alrighty, item eight, the consideration to approve a rap tax, rap tax request for the Washington City Concert Band, Secretary Jessica Ross. I was gonna say, you are not Jessica. Just tell us who you are when you get to that mic.
I am Sarah Lane.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm the president of the Washington.
Awesome, we had a couple of questions last night, it's actually how much was requested or needed?
Yeah, there was no amount.
There wasn't an amount, they're just at the band, just requesting some money, so we said.
So I looked at the application that Jessica sent in to her secretary, on the financial page, it said we were requesting two thousand.
Any idea what that funding was?
We will be using it for music purchases, rental of facilities for concerts.
That's what we wondered.
Don't have one, I like hearing this. We don't have one, so we usually end up in high school. If Mr. Clark with Washington, or sorry, with high school, paid to us, we can do three, but if he doesn't, pay dollars, so it's four hundred dollars.
Sweet talk him a little, though.
I'm doing my best.
If you need the council, tell, let us know.
So, yeah, so we do stuff like that, last year we got these nice shirts along with all the others.
Well, the band is a great asset to our community, I certainly appreciate, really does, members of our community have participated in that.
How many, how many are participating now? Right now, I think our last concert was around forty or forty-five.
I move approval.
Okay, motions for approval for two thousand dollars to the Washington City Band for the rap tax distribution motion, one second. So a motion and a second.
Ranger, I.
Bellis and I, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
How much is my new charge?
Um, anywhere between three and five hundred, depending on, we usually have friends at the two nights, I dress for the night and the night of concerts.
And I vote aye. Thank you.
Pretty soon, you'll be able to rent from rooms in opening, hopefully, in Washington City. They're opening this fall.
This fall, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Item eight C, consideration to approve a request for a rap tax distribution to Washington City Leisure Services to replace the playground equipment at Veterans Park and the new improvements at Greens Springs Park Basin, African Leisure Services Director Barry Blake.
Thank you, council. We went over this last night, I sent a couple of emails today, just to clarify and have it reflect what we talked about. Just pass it out, which one's first on here? Playground at Veterans Park. Uh, we received this, yeah, we got it today, so let us see. Uh, so there's what we've talked about, we've talked about taking out the rubberized tile element, it was way expensive, and having to do all those improvements there, and just putting in wood chips, wood chips are not on this, so we would have to add, and I put that also in the email, twelve thousand dollars to that for wood chips.
I know that we discussed those wood chips last night, is this, are those, I know that we did in the past, your Parks and Recreation has done a lot of our own wood chips, now not in playgrounds, obviously, does it require a special chip in this?
Yeah, we have to order those.
We couldn't produce our own chips by, I know it was a great thing up around the ballfields and stuff, where we had a lot of people go and eat their Christmas trees, and then we chipped them into those things, and it was a great project for everybody involved.
Not for playgrounds, it has to be certified, brought in, and we do that, we order those, we order them for all of our playgrounds.
So how much did you say we're adding on to this, one twenty-seven, fifty-figure?
Twelve, twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
So it's one twenty-seven, yeah, fifty, and then, so it'd be.
It'd be one thirty-nine fifty.
One thirty-nine fifty. Next one?
Yep.
More questions on that?
Actually, yeah, they're in here together as one item, so we'll handle it as one item. If you wanna cut and paste in the middle of that, we can do that through motions.
Just, that's a good question. When this being talked about, where the Veterans Park expansion possible, redesigning or refurbishing the church, if they were to, if the city were to receive that, would the cost of renovation included in that earlier budget, or anticipated, whether it was?
Well, we never really did have a, yeah, not on, yeah, just to be brilliant, that was just phase one, but in that, in that other phase, so that we don't have anything put together yet, we could do that, but the intention of that, and with that, with the old chapel, is actually to have a theater there.
Well, I know, and I, so again, we're looking at what we do with funds, at some point, that's gonna happen, I'd like to be able to have the funds and ability to do it, because that's not gonna be cheap or fair.
Yeah, it would be more than what the funds we have, we'll have, I would imagine, for what we have, you know, in the future, unless that, which I think it probably will be, I know they're gonna, they're going to, when that rap tax, ten years is up, they're gonna, their plan is to. Go again, but whether that happens or not.
I wouldn't budge into it at this point.
Yeah, sure, we can, we can.
But I, that's why I like the idea of creating that fund, that we actually start allocating funds into that, so if those funds are set aside, they don't become part of this local movement, and then you get, we redistribute, and we show a commitment to say, it doesn't matter where that theater may end up, if it ends up here, if it ends up there, if it ends up there, I mean, where it ends up, it's material, we start to say, hey, we committed to theater, or something of that effect.
There's a stage in that building already, there would have to be certainly a lot of money put into it, because it wouldn't be sufficient to, you know, to run what needs to be done with what's there, but so it'd have to be expanded and, you know, how it taught, you know, to do all the things that they need to do, but.
Or the school district could build a new elementary for us, might be spaced there.
One of the challenges, of course. One of the challenges we have, of course, with the old church, you can't, talking really hypothetically at this point, because we haven't got it.
Exactly, I agree, that's another unknown, we don't have that.
But the other issue is, I mean, we've had some ideas, I like the idea of setting the funds aside, because counsel Bellis can probably do this better than anyone, you can, depending on how the cost of renovation, sometimes that does not make sense, especially with you, you should basically pay and remove, rebuild, and, and we may find that in some of our best-laid intentions, when it comes down to just dollars and cents, it may not work, so we didn't like the direction the council's talking about, not just set the fund, set the funds aside, and then when the proper, appropriate decision comes forward, we should.
They even suggest, I don't know, I mean, it's not in front of us, so we can't really move on that, but we could ask them to come back with an allocation we set aside, or you, I guess, anybody could, an allocation we set aside for cultural arts.
Yeah, so.
I think the council could probably do that any time.
Well, what might be beneficial, that to that, we touched on this, I think this was a discussion I had with our leisure services director as well, because you all have had some of this discussion about, you know, what's the right amount to kind of set, you wanted to set some aside, but kind of what's the right amount? But what might be helpful for you all to make that decision, because at least probably what we ought to do is, no, I don't want to be careful about saying this, but I don't want it to sound like any preapproval either, but we really ought to look at the remaining years of the rap tax, what the council reasonably sees might go into those facilities associated with, they might consider, and then know kind of where that's at, and use that also as a guidepost as well, in your discussion.
And I like that Troy's saying, if it's a big project, then this could be our down payment on it.
But I mean, at the end of the day, legislatively, you can say, there, we talked about that before, because the rap acronym, you can say a third, but I just thought, I was just thinking as we were sitting here, might still be helpful to you all, as you have that in the discussion, to at least, let's kind of put some numbers on the remaining years, any capital decision you might want to consider, we can extrapolate what the rap tax will probably collect during most of the remaining years, and that could maybe, yeah. So, can I make this suggestion? Since the raps started, I understand it's a fairly new fund, but drawn it down to zero three times, if we approve, if what we've approved already, that would be, if we retain toward a thousand, it's currently, it would be fair to make a motion that that's the start of that fund, we kind of play a little bit of catch-up for the prior, prior issues.
Yeah, where it's not on the agenda, I don't know.
We'd want to do that in a separate discussion. But sure, certainly, sure, that's, that's. I think. No, I think, I think we should, I think we should, we don't have time to, I mean, I've talked to the commissioners that have said, hey, you know, we've got these funds, we'd like to fund things in Washington, but nobody's asked us to, so let's give them a reason to put some funds into it, but I still think they're gonna expect us to do some of our projects.
So, I forget, right, but I think that's why you have an idea, like we're dedicating it, we're dedicating it to a black fund, putting it away, and build.
And I would say, yeah, even if we. I'll approve. All of the parks and recreation things tonight, you know, we'll look for something that's new and attractive to them, maybe the concept of renovating some of these retention funds, might be that, so maybe if we approve it, but we go back and see if they'll, but we can, these ones are for ours. That would be nice to get some of their money in there, probably not gonna give us money on that, we think someday we're gonna do something, like we stick a hundred and fifty thousand away, I don't think that that's gonna get approved, it would have to be specific.
They'd have to come to them and present it, and say, this is what we're looking for. Yeah, absolutely.
Or even the boilers, okay, the money that we need to finish that project, might be something, they were here, they heard all the, for all that was going on, that might be, they would like to run some of those, go ask for something.
Okay, we have the next item, which is, who's passed out our Greens Springs Park Basin improvements, but also.
And then the only thing, again, that's not on there, and we talked about it last night, and it just depends on what direction you want me to go, we don't have any recreation equipment, what you did for that, this is just to, you know, go in and renovate that and make it into, you know, built down there, and so I, Cole and I got on and looked at a bunch of things, a couple of soccer goals and a baseball backstop, we're looking at about eleven, eleven thousand, somewhere in there for that kind of stuff, we did a backstop, so that, it just depends on what you want to do, if you want to allocate any more money for that, okay?
Backstops aren't too beneficial with this down there.
So soccer goals are a lot less expensive, soccer goals are a couple thousand dollars each, so. Yeah, so I, I thought so too, and then I went and talked, and wanted to find out exactly what was being used down there, and how, and they, they use all those on a continual basis, I thought there might be some extra, because we have so many of them, they're all different sizes, and they, they have different sizes, they're needed, so they need to stay there.
Are they permanent, or do we need a small shed that we can store?
No, they're permanent, we keep them down there, there's areas that we keep them down there, but they're used on a continual basis, that was my, that was my idea.
What would a soccer goal, what are we looking at on soccer?
Couple thousand dollars, yeah, so you're fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars for a soccer goal.
Squeezed and say, donated by Sunrise Engineering.
They can try.
I think your engineering and your mo- fees are, mobilization fees aren't gonna be eleven thousand.
They, they took that clear down, I don't know if you, if you have the one from before, I should have brought it.
This is the one that you just barely gave me.
Yeah, but they, but from last night, they've, they've taken a lot of stuff out of there, there's substantial money taken out of that from what was last, last night.
It's still, it says mobilization, eleven thousand, it says landscape and irrigation design.
Well, they just, they just go by what, what's usually charged when they bid, and this is gonna be a bid process, I'm just, that's where they get their numbers from, and they, and they have these projects.
So that will come back to a ward, so basically the council will have another look at this thing to a ward, basically.
Exactly.
So right now, we're just allocating a budget.
This is a bid, it's a bid process, and when these engineers look at that, they, they, you know, they look at other projects, and other things that are done, and they just put those numbers together for what those are, and then, and then that's what, that's why they put those numbers together, and you don't know what the bid comes out to be, so.
Any other discussion for Barry concerning rap tax funds for these two projects within the city? I'll look for a motion.
I move approval of the request for the rap tax distribution of Washington City Leisure Services to replace the playground, Veterans Park, and improvements in the Greens Springs Park Basin. Amounts, we add eleven thousand to that last.
So the one would be?
Hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
One thirty-nine thousand fifty.
For the playground and.
Three oh eight eighty, three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred, so it's four four seven eight.
It doesn't include the backstops.
So we need another four thousand.
I'll be honest, I don't think you need a backstop.
Yeah, the soccer goals would be, the soccer goals would be about four thousand.
I think we'll squeeze, I said, I think we get Sunrise Engineering.
All right, four three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred.
So grand total of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
And I will second that.
The ones that went to make soccer complexes, maybe they've got something.
Something there, exactly.
We probably, we probably even hang a little Sunrise tag on it or something.
Okay, motion is for approval of four hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for those two Washington City projects. You have a motion and a second.
Ranger, I.
Bellis, I.
Terry, I. Found it very interesting with our downtown park, that there's been a lot of talk in the last two weeks about the need for a facility down there, so it's kind of exciting to see this, right, right on the heels of that, so, great. All right, item nine, impact fees, consideration of reduced or waived impact fees on the Habitat for Humanity Home located in Washington City, applicant Habitat for Humanity of Southwest Utah.
You can introduce this. So Habitat for Humanity, contact us probably about a year ago, and asked what were the city's position with respect to, they were building one home, even that, yeah, so, but they were wondering what would be the possibility of both connection and impact fees, their request, their preference, of course, waive, waive those fees, there were some fees, of course, we don't have any control of our services. waive those fees, there were some fees, of course, we don't have any control of our services, the water conservancy district and others, and where those, I don't know what their status was, as they discussed those, with those agencies, we didn't get them, um, we told them that we could, in order to allow them to at least begin construct, we could do a deferral of staff, with the understanding that any waiver has to be granted by the council, and in the event that the council had required such a, um, such a waiver, that, um, it would have to be paid prior to, um, the insurance, so, so, uh, what I have attempted to do in the memo I provided you, um, just to give you that much, then I'll let you ask the questions now, so I've attempted in the memo to address at least two things, one is, um, the issue of how, how the council could approach this in such a way that it's more of a legislative action and not just, and that is, as it relates to what our position has been historically, which has always been, that because capital facilities and plans are built upon real data, and impact fees are the calculation of that real data, that the council cannot just necessarily or arbitrarily not waive those for someone, um, without a good rational basis, um, councils never established what the rational basis for affordable housing, albeit I might say this, statute and the state code as it relates to the impact fee does allow the legislative bodies to waive impact fees for affordable housing, um, so the statute does permit that, and they don't go any further than that, same, I think, um, uh, but we, we would probably prefer to have some sort of a rationally based, uh, policy by which we would do those, in lieu of that, because we don't have it at the moment, than, uh, one of the recommendations that I make in the memo is that we could transfer funds to an amount of about thirteen thousand and so on, from, um, community development, or one of our other funds to cover the impact, and keep that potent, so if you do that, is that considered a loan from community development? Well, you can do it, it's just a reduction in the budget, because you actually kill a fund. Yeah, so, so the reason I, the reason I define this the way I did is because I've, I've encapsulate this into a legislative decision, you have legislative authority to transfer funds within the budget, we think you get a little bit more outside of that when you are just simply determining to waive an impact fee, which not only is highly governed by state statutes, but also is articulated much more specific in our home ordinance, okay? So what I'm saying is that, and, and the reason I've also tried to encapsulate it this way, is it also does not set necessarily precedence, because you're making a legislative decision based upon available funds, for instance, or a desire to move, uh, funds over, and so you could always take the position that it, to avoid an opening to the door, and everybody coming is just saying, we had the funding to do this this year, and that's all we're doing. So, that's why I've tried to just narrow it, it's not perfect, but I tried to narrowly define this as best I could in a way that at least the council could consider, um, you can decide, if you choose to go this route, how you would like to do that, um, uh, and, and, uh, if you want to do it, although I haven't thought that through council, so I don't know exactly.
Well, let's take that open stand as possible, preferential treatment, for one entity or another.
Well, you'll still base...
I have a tax in the nonprofit, so at least, I guess already know that last discussion we had, and that issue.
Yeah, so you'll still, you'll still, if you choose to make a legislative appropriation, you still will want to rationalize, to base that upon some rationale, Habitat for Humanity is going to provide affordable housing components, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you can do that as much as you want, and I think that helps, but again, you have, by trying to define this under a le- legislative and keeping your resolution of the impact fee intact, I think that you do avoid, because if you just simply waive the fee, I think you have a bigger challenge, one is because you'd have to, your, your, your rational basis would have to be really strong in that sense, because it's so governed on what you can and can't do, whereas a budgetary allocation, the second thing that at least this permits you, is it permits you the opportunity to say, we do want, we're allocating funds for one during a year, and it's a zip, so, and then you're not violating the impact fee resolution by that.
It actually can be more problematic, why not, I think, if you set the legislation let open to say, city councils can waive impact fees, uh, for the circumstances they choose, that's already in legislation, and that, to me, is easier to rationalize rather than, and say, okay, we're going to go, we're going to develop, it's not... But you also open yourself up, maybe, because of how, of the day you did this one, tomorrow you didn't do that one, but you're...
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of...
You can't, losses you can, but how do you, how do you defend that you did?
I like that we limited to one.
So I tried to narrow...
I like that.
We don't have an ordinance that says, hey, we're budgeting for one year.
But that's, I agree with that.
We're coming in, well, you're...
We're saying this year, we find that we have enough in that budget.
Yeah, exactly, now, I'll, I'm going to add to the statute, what we should have in our language, though, this is why this needs to be a policy discussion in a broader sense, of which we have not, is the statute at least gives indication that you should have that noted within your impact fee resolution, this would be wrong, so water, that council has the right to waive affordable housing, and currently we do not, is there anything in the current ordinance, because we have an affordable housing, is there anything in our current ordinance, under the affordable housing, um, how the rationale is?
This is what, one concern I have, is we don't spell, what is affordable housing, we have nothing that spells out what affordable housing is, we use the term, but what is?
Well, in this case, they've gone, they require split equity.
Well, certainly, I mean, this one here, you could argue...
They've established affordable housing, and that's...
And that's when I would agree with what you're saying there on that portion of it.
And that's why I tried to...
What happens when the next guy comes in and say, hey, I'm providing affordable housing.
That's why...
I'm doing hut housing on affordable housing.
This is why I tried to narrowly define this as a legislative act based upon the rationale of a budget appropriation, you're not waiving at all, the impact fee stays over, you're making a legislative budgetary decision, the rationale will be based upon part of what you hear from Habitat for Humanity to say, hey, we understand that they do this, 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 and this, and because they do this, this, and this, which, again, will probably eliminate a lot of people, we're going to do that, plus, right now, we budget, we, we are comfortable making this legislative budgetary decisions without, one, creating any violation of the impact fee resolution, which I think is the bigger problem, and second of all, you narrow it to just simply say this is a budgetary decision at this point, we can add, we can take every other one on a case-by-case basis, on a budgetary decision, but second, so, so I tried to narrowly...
I like it.
I can appreciate that, I'll, I'll add my two bits, number one, I've always been a very proponent of our capital facilities plans and what they do for us with the impact fees, that, both cases, they are subsidized by Washington City committee.
Can I have, the one other second thing that I think is equally concerning, that I think that we need to address, and, and if the council feels so inclined, and if the council chooses to move ahead with this, we need to somehow address with Habitat for Humanity, and that is a, a, an appropriate level of recapture of any appreciation, what can't happen here, in my opinion, is that the city chooses to waive fifteen thousand dollars of impact, or, let me rephrase that, because that's not accurate, so pay themselves, pay, pay out of other funds fifteen thousand of impact fees, and an owner within a short period of time sells the home, picks up the appreciation of fifteen thousand immediately without any recapture on the part, now Habitat for Humanity, and I included that in the attachment, has a recapture for their portions, because again, Habitat for Humanity is putting a lot of their own effort into this, and they have a recapture up to, uh, up to ten years, and, uh, but Washington City needs to have something in effect, and whether that matters or not with the same timetable or something like that, so it just doesn't become an appreciated benefit for someone to flip, so how, how about we do this, how about we look at it and say, it's impact fees, because we have done deferrals in the past, so how about we do, uh, like a, a notice of interest or, uh, something, file something, it's the title, says we have an interest in this mail, that won't be cleared, or, or we need to clear, want to transfer title to it, yeah, that, that way, that way we're made whole at that point, we haven't, we haven't jumped into general funds, you know what I mean?
I'm, I'm more inclined, I can appreciate where we sit with this one, my personal opinion is I'm more inclined to waive the impact fees, that, the plan check, the inspection, those types of things, but I'm not inclined to do anything with the impact, because the impact, the impact's there, I can appreciate, well, the direction of alone here and alone there, I don't think that, I think this is something the council needs to spend more time on, put a policy in place, futuristic, we want to bring affordable housing in, we certainly want that, how do we make it happen, and I don't, I'm not coming tonight with saying, well, we're going to create a new entity.
And I'm, and I'm, and I'm trying to take whatever pusher to the discussion, I, I don't want the homeowner to stop not being able to move in the house, because it's going to come up with zero.
That's why, to me, this is all of a sudden, you know, here, this is the city, and...
Let's listen to that.
But I, I do have a quick question for that, for, uh, what, right, you might want, that, um... Yeah, those...
My ballot.
My ballot, those were, were... Yeah, so, I'm probably not going to be able to answer much on that, because that predated me, so I probably don't know all the details with respect to that, um, they were deferred, um, to a, to, it was quite a lengthy time, I think twenty years, something like that, because it actually, a number of years ago, kind of came up, and the council felt like keeping that in an affordable status was more important than collecting the fees, because they had made it clear that if they hadn't collected the fees, they'd probably run into a market, it's product, and has been such a...
Well, I've understood, yeah, exactly, it was the federal act, that's about the...
Yeah, see, that's what I don't know, so they'll have to answer that.
That I've understood with councils, there, it's a federal program that they were part of.
And I think if a prior council did something, doesn't mean the current council's... Well, and, and, well, and I'll tell you what I like about the federal programs, now, I've had this discussion with you, and I realize that sometimes the federal programs are, are favorable, uh, to builders, and sometimes they're not, and I get that, I like when they do trigger, when they are involved in federal programs, because the amount of requirement that is placed on an affordable housing component under a federal program is so significant that I don't even think we need to almost create that, that piece, uh, because it keeps it locked into such an affordable for such an extended period of time, I'll, I'll, I'll add this too, um, which, again, we just sometimes seem to do things that I wish we had better examples, I'm not sure there are examples of them, but I actually inquired into some of the other communities to see how they had done this, and, um, I, I, I can't, I can't give you much back, because bottom line is, they have waived them in times past, maybe Habitat for Humanity can answer this with no particular policy.
They, they have here, haven't they?
No, we've not, we've never done, not during any timeline.
I've been involved, because that's, I know that a lot of communities do waive those, but this is the thing to me, if you're so willing to waive it, then justify it to, if you can waive it that fast, then, then you, you've got to justify funds, in my opinion, if you don't believe in your capital facilities plan, obviously, you're going to wait.
But also in terms of, in terms of, like, I think, I think, I don't find it unusual, but, like, I feel, the thing with that is, with waiting, it doesn't, in terms of, we're, we're currently on active duty in the military, but say we're waiting something, like, it's coming from another budget, it's not just that it's not heavy.
Yeah, I think we can...
Way on the one, we can justify moving funds, so, in fact, it's, 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 that's maybe got to come from somewhere, does it, does it make the impact fee study, basements, or, or means, essentially, chunk of it, I think, they check up the justification, it's not just, it's a magic wand coming up from money somewhere, and then it's public, if I'm writing a management...
The reality is, you're saying it's a ma- it's magic money from here, and you're putting it over here.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, and, and I'm not even saying it's magic money, understand the purpose here, if I'm giving a management, management opinion, I wanted to give a management opinion, that narrowly defined it enough to, one, not set precedence, and, and, or limit the precedence, and two, not violate what I believe is a higher standard, and that is the resolution associated with impact fee, now again, that's just the best I could do, to get narrowly defined, and this was my, my...
Yeah, and I like the idea of setting the precedence of doing one a year or two, I mean, whatever the council wants to do, saying we will, as part of our process, give one a year, the hard part I have with this one here is just we have to be the guy sitting in front of us, because that, we, you're the guy, without, well, we decided that we're going to do it that way, so now you're the guy, uh, without having an application process, or a process by which applicants can do this, it's like, we want to be that one, we want to be that two, that waives that, or not really quite, it's a, funds of, of this process.
I, I think, I agree with you, but I think we do that, you know, I think, for the house.
I, that's, exactly.
Because we have, by law, we have to, uh, get, of course, and you comply with that, that rule.
That's, you, you, you hit exactly what my thoughts are, and that's why I hate being in this position, and I can make this decision here without having, well, I mean, I look at, say, I can waive building permit fees, I can waive inspection fees, I can waive plan check fees, those are things the city can do, in my opinion, like that, is there the impact fees to me are sacred funds, because they're attached to these facility plans, and so, this is where that money's... So, yeah, I, I like the idea of somehow being able to fund one or two of those, and having a process, I agree, because we really did this part of our housing plan, this is how, part of what we're doing, to create one, or certainly...
There, there may be some issues that we haven't heard from yet, like degree of volunteer...
Yeah, that could be part of it, to say, okay, here's what, here's what qualifies you as part of that.
Yeah, it's just, all of us says this is affordable housing, but...
I agree, I, I, I think there needs to be some standards.
I think we have to hear what their qualifications are.
Alrighty, um, so would you like to have some discussion with, with, uh, Habitat for Humanity, the representative here?
You guys waited a long time, I'm sorry.
Good evening, council members, uh, my name's Linda Baker, I'm currently, for two more days, the executive director for Habitat for Humanity here in Southern Utah, and KO is going to be taking over, so we're kind of doing it together to, tonight, so, apologize, we didn't receive any, we didn't receive the communication of a, the, which we held last night of discussion, so apologize for that, or we would have been here last night as well, so you would have had that discussion, um, but, uh, anyway, several questions have been raised, you know, number one, if I can address, affordable housing, um, your, your affordable housing plan, Washington City's Affordable Housing Plan, does define what is affordable housing, and, um, it does a very good job of that, and, uh, that was done, I think, in twenty seventeen, I believe, right, so, uh, any, is, affordable housing is not paying more than thirty percent of your income for your housing, including your utilities, and, uh, that's what Habitat does, is to get their payment added, so, I think we'd be willing to entertain questions and discussion, if you have any other questions for us.
What, what is the contribution of the Habitat for Humanity and, uh, and the, and the person that's going to occupy in this one?
Monetary or volunteer-wise, all of them, monetary-wise, they do have to have a mortgage, they will have a mortgage, it's not given to them, that mortgage is set at thirty percent of their, whatever their income is, and, um, your plan says that it's between thirty and eighty percent of the average median income, this particular individual's at fifty-one percent, Habitat does not bill for anybody who is over eighty percent of the AMI, um, which is identified in, in your plan as well, so they would have a, a house payment that is set for them at thirty percent of their, no more than thirty percent of their income, and it's a zero percent mortgage.
That includes utilities, direct?
An estimation of utilities, um, we do a zero percent mortgage, which is what makes it affordable.
And that's, that's backed by the, the nonprofit, or is that federally backed on a program?
Um, we, we don't, we don't currently, here, we don't receive any federal fund, um, lots of habitats do, uh, we have not, um, applied for federal funds, so our funds are fundraisers, as well as private, um, foundations. And, oh, and our, uh, two hundred and fifty hours of sweat equity is required by the homeowner, um, in order for them to take part in the house.
Where have you built these homes in each of our cities?
This was, what, twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-third, you wanna talk about that?
Uh, sorry, twenty-third, um, uh, we recently purchased a property in Hurricanee. Uh, we're building our next, uh, there's also an individual who has the property already, uh, and she's looking to just receive a mortgage. She's gonna be quite, I'm just remembering.
And, and, and since I've been here, um, been at Habitat, I, a house we built at Hurricane, we went before them, and that's what they did. Was they, um, allocated, allocated funds from other, other funds and, and, it was not technically waived the impact fees, but.
Which city was this?
Hurricane. We have built three other homes in Washington City. Um, two of those were, uh, rehabbed, so that they've been impacted fees. And the other two were quite a while ago, and our records didn't show what, what may have happened there, I'm not sure. Origination fee? We, we, we finance our own mortgages, so we don't have any fees other than the title fees that we're, that we have to have. So, no, there's no mortgage origination fee. We do work at the bank currently to help where they give us a down payment assist, they don't give to us actually. They have a down payment assistance, we require homeowners to have seven hundred dollars down, they have to bring seven hundred dollars for a down payment. And then we have a, a local bank that matches that for us on each of our homes.
Is there a limit to how soon they could sell a home that they occupy?
Yes, sir, it's.
And it was mentioned a recapture, what's, what's that character?
So we have the right of first refusal, so it's the, on your self, the home, the first, you know, first day, uh, I think, uh, after that.
You did talk a little bit about recapture of fees in the, in a title restriction or a deed restriction, I mean. Um, that, that's a possibility too, because that is exactly what we do on all these others, is to, is that, is that with the deed restriction.
That's how you guys do your recapture some people.
Yes. So it's, it's always harder to say to somebody who's, who's, you know, worked at this home, who's put, who's put the sweat equity in, who's put improvements in, you know, say in ten years. It's really hard to say to them, well, you can't sell it to anybody, you have to sell it for an affordable home price. They're the homeowner, they own that home. It's easier to do when you're renting apartments to say rentals, this is, you know, we wanna make sure that we can capture this and keep this here. So home, homeownership is a little bit harder to do. Um, you know, we hope that our homeowners get into their home, we hope they make their lives better. We hope that they, um, you know, are able to maybe go back to school, start a business, do something that, um, will allow them to have a better life. And that this was their first step and their first hand up in getting to that point. You know, in the United States, our number one asset, um, home, wealth asset for, for individuals is their, is their home. And, you know, these individuals can get in and currently, to date, not one of our homeowners has sold their home. There are some of them that have paid them off and, and they, they continue to live in them, you know, that kind of a thing. But to date, nobody has sold their home. We do have the right after the twelfth year to sell it, and none of that has to go back on the deed restriction. But before that, they don't receive anything.
We all, we, we get everybody here, well, it's been mentioned, but one of the impact fees is like, maybe a couple of times, you know, water.
Yes. Well, Ron Thompson, although technically now, I think, I think Zach, Mr. Miss, is, is, has taken over. Uh, Zach has waived water impact fees for, um, Hilldale City, anybody building in Hilldale City. Trying to get some, you know, economic development going on.
I don't think Hilldale was ever quoted as water, is that correct?
He said they waived them. So, but, no, before, before Zach, no, nobody's been, I, I, I have met with them.
What's the average value of the home?
They will vary, this one here, the reason, um, it's a little bit more than normal. HUD does not allow us to put more than, um, we cannot have two children of the same, of opposite sex in a bedroom. We cannot have more than two children in a bedroom. Most of us were raised with more than two children in a bedroom, but under HUD guidelines. This, uh, this homeowner is a, a single mom with four children and three boys and one girl. So we had to do a four-bedroom home. And the lot we bought was kind of small. We learned things as we go along, it was a corner lot, I didn't take into account the setbacks for both sides. And, uh, could not fit the footprint to do a four, four-bedroom, had to go to a, a second, partial second.
Typically, you don't do a second story.
No, but, no. And part of our problem is that most of the neighborhoods in this, you know, Washington, Hurricane, St. George, they're all have C C N Rs. And in those C C N Rs, we have to comply with those. So we do think, um, the housing enterprise is not under, well, not as strict of C C N Rs. So it will be a little bit different for us, and it, and it definitely will be, um, a smaller home. Um, but it's also being built for at least a single, um, older individual. So they're, they are different, they're not always the same, it just depends on what the C C N Rs are. We did invite the council out to our, our, our ribbon cutting, um, and see the home. It's, uh, it's pretty amazing with all the donations and all the things in there, so.
I see the invite on the ribbon cutting, but I was there for the groundbreaking.
There for groundbreaking, yes. Anything else you have, any other questions?
Other questions for? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, council, we'll bring it back to you for motion, we'd like to handle this one.
That, the local housing plan, so you have a selection process, and, and, to be here, whatever it is, not my obligation, I can walk on that. I mean, concerning, um, but there's a issue with the C O.
What if, what if we were to do that, are you so inclined to, um, I guess, what's your thought process as far as moving forward? Are you more needing to funding it via other funds, the transfer of funds? Which is.
I think we have a discussion before, because the legislature said that we can, for, for certain reasons, do it for affordable housing. And that's already established, and it's fair to have that conversation, whether or not we all go there. But that's, that's, I mean, it's a term you just put in the council, but they weren't that much.
We, we have heard for this one, and we've heard some conditions, okay, that, that, we've heard about, that every thirty percent of the income. Um, there has to be sweat equity, it's, we're going to someone that's providing zero interest on, on the mortgage. Um, there's some return of, uh, costs after three years and twelve years, I think, is what I heard.
If we stick to those conditions, basically, right, or, or what happens?
For one.
Well, you know, I have not heard of other businesses that are doing that, have that, or.
Right.
Okay, so.
Well, there's one thing that says that Washington City can have, you know, an application process where even the individual or neighbor, or, or, one of their, one of their neighbors. And I know that there's homes that have been built locally, that not, or not from Habitat, that have done low, low charities, but.
Well, consider if that's important, but most of the buildings don't have the resources to provide.
The other, the other phenomenon of this too is, is the deed restrictions, so, on what, what, the deed restriction says, I mean, when, when it gets sold, whether it's, um, your one, two, three, twelve, whatever it is, that the cities will. I, I think that's a fairly good, that was, that was, that's.
What is, what is the timetable you're looking out C F O, what are we, what are we looking?
I'm just asking, you know, I think they would like to have a lot of this wrapped up by the end of the month, first month. But I have just asked, and they've said they're willing to do this, especially if the council will, feels that they ought to do a table, and especially have a little bit more discussion, and the council will continue to have this discussion with regards to Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity campaign, the impact fees at the moment, release the C F O. Still probably wanna talk about any restrictions we put on fees before closing, with the understanding that the council can, we can come to terms with this, that we should. That way we, um, and delaying the C F O, as, as, as.
The other issue is, we don't have to move this here, so.
Well, I know, I know that's the other issue for.
Kind of basic.
So, so I don't think, it sounds like we don't need to hold up the C F O, um, which is good. And yet we can continue to have some discussion.
I'm, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna try a motion.
Okay.
I think it's not that I'm gonna give another, try a motion. I move approval of moving from the development funds to Habitat for Humanity. This opportunity for someone in our city to get a home. Um, given that they do sweat equity, that Habitat contributes the mortgage shit zero percent, and that there be some recapture of the fund clause that we develop jointly with Habitat, that satisfies us and works with their constraints. Um, as a condition of this approval, however, that we, as a council, um, include in our affordable housing some consideration for how we, in fact, within the future, um, provide this kind of assistance.
So, did you, did you get that motion?
Mostly.
Did you get the high points, do you need it?
In other words, I think we need additional discussion, I think we can work this along and still get additional discussion.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Grade your eye.
So with that, obviously, with, with only having three of us, it has to go to a poll. Hundred percent opposed, that would die. Yes, we need another motion. Should I make a motion? I have not, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and take this, uh, for further discussion to our next meeting on August fourteenth. Actually, I'd like to have the discussion at workshop, um, on August thirteenth, and also on the agenda for August fourteenth.
Yeah, I, I will, um, I'll second that, but I won't be here on the fifteenth.
I will also suggest that we have some, uh, staff work on what, how we might.
Yeah, that's the thing I, that I would like to have, that, yeah, that's my biggest thing, I, I like the idea of the transfer. I think we can facilitate the transfer, but I think that we need, we need to, in the plan of how do we, how do we address it going forward? How do we, do we do a year, how do we make those decisions, those types of things, if we go forward on that? This is how we're gonna do it. I think it just is, yeah, I'd like to buy this. Maybe we don't have to, should we move it till the, to our second meeting on August, that'd give us a full month. Well, actually, if they're gonna go ahead and, we're not holding anybody up at that point. It's a little longer, maybe we could have a discussion at our workshop on the thirteenth and actually move.
Let me check my schedule, so thirteenth and fourteenth. Right, I might have a hard time calling, but, uh, it's, it's up to you, I'll be uncomfortable if you guys have, like, get the summary of it.
Council's card, you have a question? See if you call, call, both ears, they can't talk. Yep, on a table situation that we're working for, we need to set a date certain, where it's not a public hearing. That must be the same. Futuristic.
Well, I don't think he's, he's, he's. Except that it's, so it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be, it's never, it's not.
Get on it, yeah, let's get on it, let's have a date.
I don't, we require, we have, you know, because it wasn't a public hearing. We do that, just.
Courtesy or some.
Correct, as a, like, we're trying to set up a public hearing date, we're not there, I, but I don't assume. You get, we can have a public committee, public hearing.
So, uh, let's just go ahead and leave it then, take it to our next workshop and city council meeting. That's my motion.
I already seconded it.
Oh, we have a motion and a second, sorry to hear that.
Grade your eye.
Ellis and I.
Turek eye. We'll look forward to discussing that a little further. Thank you for helping us put a plan in place. That's how our plans come to fruition, it's out of need. Item, um, ten, consideration, this is a resolution, consideration to approve a resolution, authorizing and approving an increase in the participants' entitlement share under the carbon-free power pro, uh, project, power sales contract, or the layoff power sales agreement associated with joint use modular plant operations at the carbon-free power project and related matters.
I'm ready. If you have any questions.
Say, this is another item that we discussed, uh, quite in length last night. This is dealing with our nuclear, uh, hopefully, future power project up in Idaho. And gives us an opportunity to, uh, futuristically get in on a great power rate, uh, if it all comes to fruition. So that's kind of the high points of the discussion. Any discussion from council? I'll look for a motion.
We spent quite a bit of time on this yesterday, and, um, appreciated the power services director here, to work us through. Let's see, I'd go ahead and make a motion with the approved resolution, authorizing, approving, and increasing the participants' entitlement share of the carbon-free power project, power sales contract, for the layoff of the power sales agreement associated with joint use modular plant operations at the carbon-free power project.
Motion is for approval? And a second, and council will grade that.
Grade your eye.
Ellis and I.
Turek eye. Item eleven, ordinances, considerations to approve an ordinance amending the Washington City Code, Title Five, Public Safety, Chapter Two, Offenses, nuisances and traffic, Section Seven, Cutting Through Corners, Police Chief Jason Williams.
I'm gonna get in trouble for that now.
Yeah?
If you pass it. And I'll be quick to save time for Chief Evans.
Good thing there's only three of us.
Uh, what this essentially does is allows us to enforce ordinance that will protect our, our private properties and the patrons there on. We see this occur usually at an intersection that's backing up, and they'll take a detour into a private property to circumvent that traffic control device, usually in a swift manner to avoid any more congestion from the traffic. So this allows us to then be proactive and enforce that.
Does that, does that include the service station that brings the races?
Right.
Does that include the service station that brings the braces?
Right.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, I, you hit it on the head, because usually it is a lot, very quick pace that they're moving through, because they're trying to, and it's been walking out of stores to the gas pump, and it's, it's hilarious carrying.
So there's nothing on state code that allows us to enforce that, that's why it comes to a city ordinance, so, the only thing on, on the state code would be if they didn't come to a complete stop, re-entering onto the roadway. We then have a state code for that, but nothing to protect, or travel on that private property.
Does this ordinance, just by creating it, then have natural tax fine?
So it'll be, it'll be an infraction, and under your other ordinance in Chapter One, four one, so it'll be there, so it'll be an infraction, not to carry more than seven hundred dollars fine.
I'd suggest you give a warning first time.
Yeah, and we will, and you understand our philosophy when it comes to.
No, it's the same issue.
Yeah, so.
But the fine of seven hundred and fifty.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
That's still, that's.
Well, that's what it's in, ordinance.
All right, any more questions for Chief Williams? I'll look for a motion from the council. I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the Washington City Code Title V, Public Safety, Chapter Two, Offenses, Nuisances and Traffic, Section Seven, Cutting Through Corners. Motion is for approval by Council Bellis.
Granger, second.
Great, second by Councilman Granger.
Granger, aye.
Bellis, aye.
Turek, aye. Item twelve, interlocal agreement, consideration to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement for shared public safety operations, our chief Matt Evans. This is another one of those that we talked about quite a bit last night, went through, and it's an exciting time.
The only thing that, that we didn't talk about last night is, of course, there were a lot of people that weren't involved in putting this together, we really appreciate that, all that help, Steve Attorney Starkey, obviously did a lot of legal review on that, as the manager of Carter, helped quite a bit, being, putting all that together. And then, of course, in the back, is Chief Coleman from Hurricane, is here, in case you have any questions for him as well.
Thank you.
And, but.
Any questions for?
I think I asked them all last night.
Just by note, thank you, chief, for your cooperation from your city and your group, if you'll take that back from our group, that certainly has been groundbreaking and very refreshing to watch two cities come together and put some great things together, join, joining forces, and it's an exciting time to get to finish this baby off. Hey, shh. I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion from the council, we're not listening to Starkey.
Um, I move that we approve the interlocal carbon agreement for shared public safety operations, second.
Okay, motion is for approval to the interlocal agreement, second by Councilman Bellis.
Granger, aye.
Bellis, aye.
Turek, aye. Item thirteen, master fee schedule, consideration to amend the master fee schedule by adding fire department fees. This again is a good discussion we had last night about the need for some of those inspections and some of the things that our fire department is supposed to do, so, add that to our fee schedule. Any questions for the chief?
No, I think we suggested last night that the names come off the official fee schedule and just be a.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
Okay, so I move approval.
Motion is for approval of the master fee schedule for our fire department?
Second.
Councilman, aye, second by Councilman Bellis.
Granger, aye.
Bellis, aye.
Turek, aye. Item fourteen, report of officers from assigned committees. Reports from our assigned committees. Go ahead. If there's not, we'll go ahead and move to item fifteen, our city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protan, I'll just update you on a couple of things, some of these things I, I just kind of pick and choose, but this one, I haven't updated you on in a while, just because they seem less exciting. So, our nineteen hundred East lift station is our sewer, it's happened, it's been designed there, and there are about thirty days to have a rise on that, Washington Dam, sewer line, kind of the same status, the staff.
Nineteen hundred East is, this is Washington Dam legislation. Is that drinking, that's the station, yeah, parallel line. One question I, I have one question, I'm termite citizen, I had a question about the alignment of that sewer line, being surveyed or whatnot, I thought that the council's still in the middle of those designs and whatnot, we have concerns.
Yeah, we're really, really limited, that's got a really hard target, so, you have to pick up a lot of that area that is, east of nineteen hundred East, actually, east of Sandville Road, we grabbed it back down to that intersection, and then, like, all the Sunrise Valley area and part of the Long Valley area, a bump in back up to Washington Dam, so, that alignment, we have to still get gravity down to that intersection.
I don't know all the ins and outs of it, as far as that goes, and I think that you understand the concern of probably the council would be, that sometimes you get these big developments that can be added suddenly, because to accommodate the development, we disrupt people who are out alfalfa farming and say, we're gonna have sewer lines, and we're alfalfa building them to accommodate this development. Now, you say that's what's happening, I don't know the exact cases.
We're running actually down the canal.
Okay, and that's what he mentioned, if you went down the canal, it'd be much better, and I said, I don't know what's, he just said, well, they're out the middle of this field, surveying, and I said, on the district.
Yeah, we're running right down the canal, and then.
So we shouldn't really impact anybody.
So.
Superb. I knew you'd do it right. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay, just a couple other items, Gipson Basin Rehab Counties, that we had, it's got a six month, it should be dated on. I've mentioned these before, but these are of high interest, and if I go in the August newsletter, I'll be addressing this particular issue to the public in large, and that is just about the status update on that road. You'll start about, this may be on his first star, about a hundred and forty, so, I know that I, living out in the field, take lots of questions about that, and so, I think this'll, well, I think, you know, that mile post eleven, that was, that'll be signed in, in July, Washington Parkway Design, in July, the staff, you know, giving that plan, and just later, in September. Main Street will come back, came out the first of August, just to go, find details that after the design, things like lining and grading, and then was the next level, analysis, is the design. And then probably the final thing, I think, is just, we've got, you have a pretty big rehab project on the state substation this year, which will maybe, the fall, when the locals are down, but we are in the process of getting transport, we're in right now, and pushing out the contractors, and construction, getting some turnout, we need to be setting the state substation, the surface very, very well over there, so it deserves a little attention.
You know, there's been a lot of, as councils, they've always talked about, just keep it going, just keep it going, just keep it going.
I think that's it, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for? All right, there is a need for a closed session this evening to go discuss pending or potential litigation, so, for a motion to close this meeting and move to that closed session.
So move, second.
Motion for approval to close our city council meeting and move to a closed session to discuss pending or potential litigation.
Bellis, aye.
Turek, aye. We are adjourned from this meeting.